Hello, everybody. I think we're going to get started. This is the June 24, 2025, meeting of the Johnson County Planning Commission. So, call to order. Can we please do a roll call?
Sure. Gregory Wolf is absent. David Bedearys?
Present.
Kelly Rast is absent. Brad Miller is absent. Lindsay Grisay?
Present.
Brad Starrett? Steve McGank is absent. Tim Ork is absent. Leslie Hind is absent. Craig Connell?
Here.
Andrew Logan?
Present.
And Kevin Hogan?
Here.
Thank you.
So, it appears that we have enough members here, but not enough for a quorum. And so, the agenda items on the agenda that involve a vote or approval, including the meeting minutes and the election, we will postpone till the following meeting when we do have a quorum. So, I think we'll start with the public comment section. So, we'll have people who've signed up come up for a public comment about two minutes. Just as a reminder, there are certain items that there'll be a later public hearing on, presentation, and additional time for public comments then. So, you're welcome to make public comments today, but you'll also have another opportunity in a follow-up meeting about specific agenda items, including the Southwest Metro-Johnson County Transportation Connection, which may be the reason why some of you are here.
I'm going to go ahead and read the hybrid statement if that's okay.
Thank you.
Sure. "This meeting is now being recorded in the Board Hearing Room with Planning Commission members attending in person. There's also an option for virtual attendance on Zoom webinar. For Zoom participants wishing to speak, please use the raise hand function in the Zoom app at the start of the agenda item on which you desire to comment. Comments will be received from in-person attendees first, followed by Zoom participants. When it's your turn to speak, the moderator will recognize you by name or phone number used to join the Zoom webinar, and the microphone will be unmuted. Please state your name and the city and state where you reside for the record, followed by your comments. All public speakers will be limited to two minutes unless the chair designates a different time period. If you have trouble with Zoom, please call 913-715-9666. Board members, staff, and presenters, please state your name every time you begin talking, and please speak into the microphone so that people attending via Zoom can hear you and the comments can be transcribed for the record. This is a public meeting. We are presenting live and recording the meeting. Thank you."
Thank you. So, is, did anybody sign up to do public comment today?
We don't have anyone signed up.
Mm-hmm. Was there anybody in the audience that was wanting to make a public comment today? Sure, go ahead, step up. That's okay.
My name is Don Flashpolar. I live at 32620 West 111th Street. I have a couple of comments and then some concerns. My understanding is that 111th will be a Type 2 road with a, with a speed limit of 50 miles an hour. And I, after I heard that, just for curiosity, I went over to College Boulevard, which is four lanes, two lanes on either side, and then a median in the middle. That is all 45 miles an hour. So, I'm kind of aghast at that comment, and if somebody could clarify that, I would appreciate it. A couple other comments. Roads will be constructed as development occurs and when traffic volumes warrant. I'm confused about that because I'm not sure how you can determine when the traffic volumes warrant, when 111th right now going west is a dead end. So, I'm not sure if I could get some clarification there. That would help. I don't know how you can. I understand that there's going to be some development, but I don't understand how you can make that judgment based on a, an assumption. It seems like a big assumption, particularly concerning the fact that that road is going to be horrendously expensive with the topography west of 111th Street going into the, going into the plant. That's all I can think of. Now, I have another, some, obviously, some other concerns regarding the number of driveways that enter onto 111th Street just on, just on, I'll call it my side of Kill Creek. A lot of, 50 miles an hour going, 45 miles an hour down there would be, would be way too high, but 50 particularly. And there's just a lot of entrances onto 111th that I'm very concerned about the safety. So, I appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I see we have another person for public comment.
My name is Nancy Flashpolar. Same address, same city. We live at 111th and between Kill Creek and heading towards the plant, but it's a dead-end road. And because, the reason it's a dead end is that's where Kill Creek Park is. So, it's, it's like horse trails and wide, you know, shoulders so that horses can go along there, and there's different trails that go. It's a horse community. And 111th, if you're, if you're over, let's say, at Seven Highway, it dead ends at Cedar Creek. So, then you would have to go from Cedar Creek down that huge hill. I don't know if you've ever been to Cedar Creek in that area of topography, but it would require such a long expansion bridge just to get across that area going west. And then, there's, it's a dead-end road. It's, the mile, the road is only a mile and a half long at this point between our house, between Kill Creek. It's only a mile to where it dead ends, and it's only a half mile the other way to where it dead ends. So, we're talking a road that's a mile and a half long that goes from nowhere to nowhere. It's just basically Kill Creek, two splits, and probably maybe 12 houses. Each house is 10 acres or 20 acres. So, how are we going to get all this traffic when all these people live there already that are in a very rural area? And I just, I feel like it's very sad that they're trying to industrialize this area that's very rural, and people have farms and stuff like that. So, when, when it's already occupied with many houses, not as many as can be, like every lot is sold, and each one has an entrance onto 111th. So, then you're talking about 50 miles an hour whipping down that road, and you're trying to pull out onto a road that right now goes to nowhere. So, I really just don't even understand why they're considering 111th when it doesn't cut through at all because of the way all the hills are, like, so steep. They would, when they go towards the plant, it drops off so steep that it has to have cutbacks like this if you're walking it. So, I don't know how they're going to go down that hill without having a huge long bridge. So, that's.
Thank you so much. Was there anybody else who was wanting to make public comment tonight? All right, hearing none. Thank you to the two that spoke. Appreciate that. Now, we will do a disclosure of conflicts of interest or ex parte communications for the commissioners. Does anybody have anything to report or disclose at this time? Okay, hearing none. As for the agenda tonight, did any of the commissioners or staff have any additions or deletions that they would propose making? Okay, hearing none, moving right along. We're going to skip over the approval of the meeting minutes till the next meeting when we have a quorum. I think next will be the Southwest Metro Area Johnson County Transportation Connection Plan Study Update.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jay Leipzig, the Planning Director. Just a couple of things. I appreciate the public that did come up this evening and spoke and are interested in this item. Couple of things, just to point out, in the packet this evening is a fact sheet that the Public Works Department prepared on the Johnson County Transportation Connection Plan that was in, in the packet for this evening. And if you don't mind, a little bit of liberty, I'm going to read the agenda item just so it's clear and transparent to the public as well. So, the Johnson County Public Works Staff will update the Planning Commission regarding the Southwest Metro Area Transportation County Transportation Connection Plan, which is a transportation study recently concluded by the county, KDOT, and adjacent cities for the purpose of identifying transportation infrastructure needs, particularly in response to the annexation and repurposing of the Sunflower Army Ammunition Site. It is anticipated that the recommendations of the, of this Transportation Connection Plan will be used to update the Comprehensive Arterial Road Network Plan, or Carnip, which is part of the Johnson County Rural Comprehensive Plan. Staff's presentation is for informational purposes and is not a public hearing item. Future updates to Carnip will include a public hearing held by the Planning Commission and consideration by the Board of County Commissioners. I wanted to give a brief overview on some anticipated meetings that we have scheduled in addition to the meeting this evening for the Planning Commission. This is a chance for you all to ask questions and listen to the staff presentation from Public Works, who I'll introduce here in just a moment. We also have a presentation to each zoning boards. We have one on July 16 before the West Consolidated Zoning Board, and we have one on August the 6 before the East Consolidated Zoning Board. And all of these meetings are, you can watch on Zoom webinar as well. We are planning on bringing a draft modification recommendation at Carnip and an update to the comprehensive plan, to the Planning Commission for review at the August 26 meeting. And then, looking forward to a, we'd have a public hearing scheduled, scheduled before the Planning Commission, before this body, on September 23 before the Planning Commission. And then, if that recommendation for approval, then would go before the, the Board of County Commissioners in October, mid-October.
Really, really quick, Commissioner Grisay here. Quick question before we move off of that. Will, for the members of the public who are interested in a draft plan, it sounds like the August 26, 2025, would that be available online for them as well as if they came to the meeting?
Yes. Commissioner Jay Leipzig, Planning Department again. Yes, that, those, those comments, we encourage comments as well, but, but yes, that evening of August 26, we'll have a draft of the recommendation. Also, I wanted to point out on the fact sheet that I mentioned, there's also a QR code in the back of that sheet for the entire plan, planning document. So, the public can download that, that document as well in its entirety. And all of these comments will be assembled and, and put on the county's website as well.
Commissioner Grisay, for the members of the public that are here, one thing that I wasn't aware of before I started volunteering with the county is that you can actually make meetings with county staff and other members of the county to talk more freely without a two-minute time limitation. And so, feel free to reach out, use that fact sheet that, that QR code is on there, as well as reaching out to members of the Planning Commission, or sorry, the staff members of the plan, you know, the staff members here, and they can connect you with other people who are helping put together that plan. So, a lot of your questions and back and forth, that's often an easier place to do it than a two-minute presentation at a podium. But we're always happy to also receive your public comment as commissioners, but that's yet another way that you can get more information and get questions answered and have your voice heard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jay Leipzig again, the Planning Department. At this point, that concludes my introductory comments, and I'm going to turn it over to Jeffrey Vos, who's our Engineering Manager in the Johnson County Public Works Department, if you're ready. Jeff?
Thank you, Jay. Jeff Vos with Johnson County Public Works, happy to be here to address you. I'll address 111th Street throughout my presentation as well, so I should answer some of your questions. And like you said, you can always reach out, more than happy to discuss it with you. So, Southwest Metro Area Transportation Connection Plan. I want to take a step back and start back with Carnip. It's our Comprehensive Arterial Road Network Plan. Talk a little bit about what Carnip is, and it's part of the overall comprehensive plan. It's reviewed annually and updated as necessary. It's a look at potential capacity needs for unincorporated roads as development occurs. It preserves options by managing access and it informs the public. What Carnip is not, it is not a construction document, and it does not contain a timeline for construction. It has been updated multiple times since it was created, and there's a list of the updates in here. One of those updates previously updated 111th Street as a Carnip Type 2 four-lane facility. So, keep that in your mind as we go back to the recommendations. What we've studied to date, well, as you can see here, a large area was left to be studied in the future because people didn't really know what was going to happen with the Sunflower Plant. That's kind of been a big question for a long time. I mean, it's been city in the park, it's been, was going to be an amusement facility at one time. So, there's been a lot of plans. So, we did study this 111th, and that was the Type 2 four-lane that came out of that. We studied this easternmost corridor through here, the Northwest Corridor Project, and that determined a north-south alignment that we call the Kill Creek Corridor. It's actually an offset alignment through that area. And then, we have not studied this east, or this western section that goes through the Sunflower Plant. So, that's what part of the study was to, to do. Now, Carnip designations, we've been talking about the Type 1, Type 2s, those kinds of things. So, the higher level that you go for the Carnip designation, the higher capacity road that you will have. And the way you get that is by you restrict access to the road. So, when you have the highest capacity road, you have the least access to the road. So, that keeps those, that capacity up. So, the study, you know, with the establishment of the Astra Enterprise Park and the old Sunflower property, and their first big tenant Panasonic being developed, the county determined it was time to see what these impacts of these developments would have on Western Johnson County Road Network and provide the affected jurisdictions a tool for determining changes to their current planning documents. So, we are not adopting this plan. There are recommendations that we and the adjacent cities are going to be taking to update our own plans, and for the county, that's the Carnip Plan. So, the scope of the study was to determine how to reconnect the Astra Park to the rest of the road network that was cut when the Sunflower ammunition plant was established. We want to designate the, the corridor through the Astra Enterprise Park that was still to be studied. We wanted to review the viability and need for the previously determined Kill Creek Corridor Route and 111th Street. And then, finally, look at the wider area to see what changes might be needed in that area. So, HNTB was selected to conduct the study. The core team chose HNTB to leverage all the study information they had collected as part of the K-10 Corridor Study for KDOT, which took an extensive look at the traffic and land use projections from I-35 around Edgerton up to K-10. The core team consisted of DeSoto, Johnson County, and KDOT, while the technical committee consisted of Edgerton, Gardner, Alatha, Udora, Douglas County, Mid-America Regional Council, Douglas County Metropolitan Planning Organization, Astra Enterprise Park, and Johnson County Park and Recreation. So, we had quite a few, we, we even had some, like, Sheriff's Office and some others there as well. So, the recommendations. So, the first part of this is reconnecting the Astra Enterprise Park and that north-south corridor. So, on the west side, we're looking at 119th Street, 127th, and 135th Street as being Type 1 two-lane facilities. So, basically, all the sectioned line roads on the west side. On the east side, 127th Street and 135th Street were looked at for, on sectioned line roads to connect on that side. And that corridor going north and south comes off of Evening Star and connects into Edgerton Road. So, the Kill Creek Corridor was looked at next, and the recommendation is to, to delete that alignment. So, we would not be looking at an offset alignment there, and we would be looking at improving the corridor, existing Kill Creek, 115th Street, and Waverly Corridor. The 111th Street Corridor, it was confirmed that it is needed through there, but the designation was actually reduced to the Type 2 two-lane from the Type 2 four-lane. So, it actually lowered the designation on there. And then, for the surrounding area, we have Four Corners, 143rd to 151st is upgraded to a Type 2 two-lane. Moonlight Road, 135th to 175th, updated to a Type 2 four-lane. 143rd Street, county line to Edgerton, as a Type 2 two-lane. This section of 143rd from Edgerton to Four Corners is a Type 2 four-lane, and then it goes back to a Type 2 two-lane for Four Corners to Alatha City Limits. And then, Dilly Road, 143rd to 159th was reduced to a Type 1 two-lane, and 151st, Dilly to Four Corners, was reduced to a Type 1 two-lane. So, just kind of changing how we think traffic is going to route through that section there going north-south. And that's really it. There's really nothing, no new corridors being established. It's all on existing roads. And so, really, the only thing I have left to talk about is next steps, which Jay already already talked about, where we have today the update, 26, tentatively looking at the Comprehensive Plan update, 23, public hearing, and then go into the Board of County Commissioners after that. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Commissioner Grisay, could, I have a, just a informational question. If you could go back a couple slides.
Sure.
Sorry.
It's okay.
Um, one more.
Unfortunately, I got to go through all these little things.
Oh, okay. I'm so sorry. I should have just asked you.
Actually, here, let me just do this.
Oh, it was, um.
There we go.
Um, can you go up two, two more? There was just a legend item that talked about road separation.
Oh, grade separation?
Yeah. What is that?
Interchanges.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Like, traffic interchanges?
Yes, like, like you would see on a highway.
Okay. Um, okay. So, going back to the recommendation slide, just a quick question. So, on like 111th, for example, or on, I think it was, it might have been 119th, is it assumed that the traffic volume on those little tail ends that are hanging out is the same as the traffic that would be between the two main arteries? Is, maybe my question doesn't make sense? You know, that's a horizontal road, and there's two primary vertical roads that are being improved.
So.
Is the traffic volume in between those two assumed to be the same as those two tails that are hanging off on either end?
Yeah. Well, we're the, so the designations are consistent for all the roads except for 143rd, where that one goes from a two-lane to a four-lane and back to a two-lane as people navigate their way through. There's not a, you know, a lot of them will go south on Edgerton Road, but also a sizable portion is, was looked at going east and then down Moonlight Road. So, that's why there's that, or, excuse me, Four Corners. So, that's why there's that change of designation there. But everywhere else, yeah, the traffic is assumed to, to be within that capacity of that type of road.
And for the traffic capacity, was there monitoring of the number of cars, or is this a study with an anticipation based on a certain metric that are coming from the new Panasonic plant or something like that?
So, the existing traffic started with this existing traffic that there is today, and then there was a look at what the potential land use would be, where development could occur, where development couldn't occur due to floodplains, other environmental constraints. And then, assumptions were made of what that development would be. Based on that, you can get what kind of traffic you think it's going to generate, and then you can remodel that as the proposed condition, and then determine what type of capacity you need on your roads.
And then, one, I apologize, one other follow-up question. Is it, for a road with driveways from residences in a rural area, how is it determined what is an appropriate speed limit given the density of those driveways?
So, that, it's actually based, and unincorporated, the board has passed a policy on speed limits. So, any paved road in the county is 45 miles an hour. Any gravel road is 35 miles an hour. Subdivision roads are 30. So, I don't know where you got the 50 from. Oh, I don't. Yeah. I don't know. Now, we have, like, 175th Street, which was done with extra wide shoulders and a full design. It, it is 50 miles an hour, I believe, so there are some exceptions, but unless it's specifically designated, county policy is 45.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions by the commissioners?
Yeah. Craig Connell, I have a question. So, the road system, or the marks on this handout don't match your slide.
For which?
Well, for example, there's a north-south pink line just west of K-7. Looks like it goes from.
That probably is in the city of Alatha, so I didn't talk about what's going on in the cities. I was only addressing what's in the unincorporated county.
Oh. Would that not be part of Carnip then?
No.
Oh, okay.
It was part of the study, but it's not part of Carnip.
Okay. So, everything else on here should match, so this handout, I take this.
Yeah. The only thing that's, the, the background map that got used here, it's no excuse, I didn't put the presentation together, didn't realize it till last minute, but the, the grade separations on Edgerton are still shown on, on this map. Those have all been eliminated, and we need to document that in the study.
You're talking about on the slide?
The, the stars.
On the slide or on the?
On the slide.
On the slide, okay.
So, it's correct on the map. It'll be correct in the, the map, the map in the study is correct.
This is correct, okay.
Yes.
One other question, again, Craig Connell. I know there's no timeframe on this, but is this something that, will any of this start in the next five years, or any, any clue on that?
The only thing I'm aware of that's going on is a little bit of Evening Star potentially up by the, the interchange, that first mile there. I think there may be some, the city may be looking at doing something to that mile road. The county has no plans for any, any of this right now. We're concentrated on safety improvements on existing paved roads, adding shoulders and those kinds of things.
Okay.
So, as far as I know, no, there is nothing planned.
Thank you.
V is in Victor, O, H is in Howes, S is in Sam.
And any other questions from the commissioners? Thank you so much for the presentation and responding to questions, and that's really helpful, especially as we kind of go forward and see the actual plan. Thank you. Mr. Leipzig or the county staff, do you have anything to add to the presentation?
Thank you, Madam Chair. No, I don't, except I apologize, Mr. Flashpolar, if I gave misleading information rounding off 45 to 50. So, I apologize for that. I vaguely remember talking with Mr. Flashpolar at the, at the DeSoto meeting, but anyway, just, I, I do apologize for that.
You are completely forgiven, and I'm, and I'm sure it was just a miscommunication. Okay, so let's go to the next agenda item, Comprehensive Plan Annual Review.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, Karen is getting ready to make this presentation tonight. This is something we do on an annual basis, and we, we are required by our KSH statute 19-2958E, which requires the Planning Commission to annually review the comprehensive plan to determine if any portion of it has become obsolete and report its findings to the Board of County Commissioners. This year, planning staff again reviewed the plan, and we, we find that it's, that it's, it's still current, remains current, particularly in the plan's recommended goals, policies, and action steps. However, certain portions of the plan are in need of updating, and work is recommended to be completed as indicated in the attached report. Karen will go through that in more detail, and we just talked about one of those items will be an update to our Carnip Plan as well. So, with that, I'll, I'll turn it over to Karen.
Thank you, Karen Miller. So, every year, staff prepares a report to help the Planning Commission in their review of the Comprehensive Plan. We have submitted our 2025 report to Planning Commission, and I'll just go through some of the major items that we've looked at in order to form our recommendations. So, the first item that planning staff looked at was the amendment of the Comprehensive Arterial Road Network Plan, Carnip. And as mentioned, Carnip is a plan of the comprehensive, is a part of the Comprehensive Plan. It's in Chapter 4. in Chapter 4, which, Chapter 4 is devoted to transportation issues. The first item of the evening was presented by Jeffrey Vos. He focused on the Transportation Connection Plan and its recommendations regarding Carnip. So I'll, in this section, focus more on the events and history leading up to this need to update Carnip. So as you can see on, on your screen, in 2022 and 2023, DeSoto annexed the mothballed former Sunflower Army Ammunition Plant for redevelopment and industrial and commercial uses. I put this slide up because it illustrates exactly the significance of this annexation. In 2022 was the first 6,000 acres annexed by DeSoto. In 2023 was the, the remaining 3,000 acres of the Sunflower Army Ammunition Plant. And you can, you can see, this is, the rest of the map is pretty much all of Johnson County. It is a significant part of Johnson County that was annexed. So in 2023, the Planning Commission's first response to this annexation was to review the county's future land use map in the area surrounding that annexation. And the, the Planning Commission submitted their recommend, recommended changes to the future land use, land use map to the Board of County Commissioners, and that was adopted in 2023. Also, in 2023, the second response that Planning Commission had was to acknowledge that the, the transportation plan for the, for the unincorporated, unincorporated area of the county needed to be reviewed. Well, our transportation plan is Carnip, and what Carnip does is it anticipates what future traffic will be on our various roads in the county. And as Jeffrey mentioned, the, the roads that we anticipate that will have a lot of traffic in the future will be a type 3, and the, the streets that have very, not as much traffic, the least amount of traffic will be a type 1. And so that's what Carnip does. It anticipates what our future traffic levels will be, and we, we, we apply a category to each of the, of the roads. So last year, in 2024, this Planning Commission again reviewed Carnip, and they, they acknowledged that their, that transportation plan review was undergoing, and that's exactly the plan that Jeffrey just talked about, the Transportation Connection Plan. And that was for the sole purpose of providing information to the county and the surrounding jurisdictions so that we can take that information, review it, and then make decisions on updating Carnip. And so that's where we are today. We've received the, the recommended changes to Carnip from the Transportation Connection Plan. The Board of County Commissioners has received an update on this connection plan study. We held an open house that Jeffrey talked about, and that was earlier this month. Planning Staff, Public Works Staff, and the consultant went to the, the community gym in DeSoto, and we talked with any public that was interested in finding out about the plan. We're here tonight with the Planning Commission, talking about these proposed changes. And as Jay mentioned, Public Works Staff will go to the, the next zoning board meetings and also give pretty much a very similar presentation to the zoning boards. And so in the meantime, Planning Staff will take the recommendations and create recommended amendments to the Comprehensive Plan. So we'll have recommended amendments to Chapter 4, which is the transportation plan, kind of folding in the results of this connection plan study, and then maybe a few additional recommended amendments. And then, you know, we anticipate that Planning would be able to have those amendments drafted for the August Planning Commission meeting for your discussion. And if the, the Planning Commission chooses to at the August meeting, they can set a public hearing for the September Planning Commission meeting. And then after the Planning Commission has, has held the public hearing and decided upon a recommendation, you'll submit it to the Board of County Commissioners. And, and hopefully sometime in the fall, the Board of County Commissioners will consider the amendments and make a final decision on those. And you've already seen this from Jeff, you know, just in case you'd like to see it again, here are those dates. So that was the updates to Carnip. Planning Staff, in our review of the Comprehensive Plan, also considered the ongoing zoning and subdivision regulations. So the Comprehensive Plan sets the policy to, to guide our decisions in the county regarding development. The zoning regulations implement those policies. So, so the zoning regulation update is a very important document. It, it will help us implement all of those good ideas in the Comprehensive Plan. We've worked with Clarion to provide project orientations to form, meet with an advisory committee moving forward to provide draft regulations. The draft regulations will be considered in three modules of related topics rather than an overwhelming one document. The first module addresses districts and uses very shortly. We'll give the advisory committee the, the draft code for them to review. The project timeline is, is intended to allow for multiple rounds of community engagement and document review, and to ensure ample opportunities to provide feedback over the course of the project. So after the advisory committee is, is done looking at that module, we'll give it to Planning Commission, and we'll also post it on the, the project's website for all of the, the public to take a look at. When the final draft of all three modules are ready, the Planning Commission will hold a public hearing and submit recommended zoning regulations to the Board of County Commission for consideration. So in general, we expect to submit to the Board of County Commissioners in spring of next year. So, so I bring up all of this talk about the zoning regulations because it's possible that while updating the zoning regulations, we, that may spur further updates to the Comprehensive Plan. And we think we've identified a possible update. Discussion during the advisory committee has touched upon a policy issue regarding housing choices and affordability within the unincorporated, unincorporated areas of the Johnson County. So Staff recommends some minor policy changes within the Comprehensive Plan regarding housing choices. And we, we recommend that when we bring the Carnip amendments to you in August, that we also incorporate into Chapter 2, that's our land use plan, these, these minor ideas. And that way, we can just wrap, wrap this minor issue in with the, the overall look at Carnip. And then, lastly, the third, third item considered by Planning was annexations. We already looked and talked about the, the big annexations in 2022 and 2023 by DeSoto. Here are the 2024 Johnson County annexations from unincorporated Johnson County into the cities. In general, there was 464 total acres annexed in 2024, and it occurred within the cities of Latha, Gardner, Spring Hill. And the majority, there's a few smaller annexations, but the majority occurred within this cluster between I-35, K-7, and 183rd Street. So in response to these annexations over the past three years, Planning Staff believes that in general, a review and update of the policy area map in order to adjust the urban fringe areas, abutting the adjacent cities is in order. So because of all this annexation, we're thinking that our urban, urban policy area could use an update. So we took this review and, of these various issues, and we put together a recommendation. We recommend forwarding the, the annual plan review report to the Board of County Commissioners with the finding that the Comprehensive Plan generally remains current, but there are some need, need in terms of updating and work, and we update work regarding the Comprehensive Plan, reviewing housing types available in the county, reviewing and updating the policy area map. And just in general, and we're, we're not saying we'll do this all in one year, but just kind of, just looking forward in the next year or two, updating the general information and demographics in the plan. So with that, there is, in the report on the last page, a suggested motion, and I'll take any questions that there are.
Karen, this is Fred Starett, Commissioner Starett. I was just wondering, we talked about changes in roads and types of roads, but it wasn't clear to me how we determine, or you determine, what the future use will be. I thought there was sort of a question about that.
The future Carnip designation for the roads, like type 1, 2, or 3?
It sounded to me like the projected use of the roads in the future is what's driving these changes that we're contemplating. Did I understand that correctly?
It's, it's looking at the land use changes that have, that have occurred, namely, the, the Panasonic plant and that Adastra Park, and looking, and other things, and looking at the general data and seeing how the, how the traffic will change in response to the different land uses. In other words, the extra trips will be spurred by this new industrial and commercial uses.
That's contemplated, then. That's on the board somewhere.
That, that is part of the model. So this, they, HNTB ran a model to come up with these recommended changes, and they fed a lot of data into that model. They, land use plans, current traffic levels, and to assist with that, they used the, the, all that data generated with the, the K-10 update. There was, and we, we didn't do this, but KDOT did a, a review and a plan of K-10. And with that, KDOT amassed a lot of data in the area along K-10 and, and all the way down to I-35. And so, so the county really benefited by being able to use that existing data and any other data that we needed to input into this traffic model.
The road changes that we saw earlier, is there a timeline projected for that?
Not at all. So, so the way that, so the, the Carnip map is, is our prediction for the future, for what those traffic levels on those roads will be in response to the land uses, and.
How far into the future is the prediction being made?
That, that's, that I do not know. We'll have to, the next time we have Jeffrey up on the stand, we'll have to ask him. Well, you know, I specifically asked him to stay, but I think he might be talking with people out in the hall. But, but no, I don't know how far in the future it goes. But, so the way the county, the way that we use it, and why the county needs that information, is when we are looking at development proposals, we need to know how to manage access from the development onto the road. And so type 1, 2, and 3 Carnip roads are dealt with differently in our zoning regulations. We are, we are managing access from the adjacent parcels onto the road in accordance with how much traffic we need to have in the future.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate the presentation. As we discussed earlier, we'll skip through, skip over the, oh, did you have more, sorry?
Oh, do we have a quorum or no quorum? We do not have a.
We do not have a quorum, Madam Chair. So we can't make an official recommendation on this. The only thing I was going to add, though, is that, and we, we touched on it, I believe when I started this position, the unincorporated area was 41% of the overall county land area. Now, I believe it's about 33%, 32%, and our population has increased. So we're becoming more dense, less land that's available in the unincorporated area, which we kind of know empirically that's, that's true, seems to be happening, trying to control that growth. And really encapsulating what this, the Carnip plan does, it's really a thoroughfare plan. It's, it's a plan to ensure those, those roadways are, are unhindered by, by driveway access as you, so you could pass through and get through that. That's, that's really the general idea of it. But there is a real science to it. Karen mentioned the modeling that KDOT and HNTB utilized. There's also the Mid America Regional Council also has data on that as well. They looked at not only Johnson County, but Wyandotte County, Leavenworth County, and Miami County, and incorporated all of those changes and any current developments and future developments that they have planned in the metro, the Kennedy Metropolitan Area into that model. So it's, it's pretty comprehensive. We were surprised that they combined three models together to come up with the data and, and their, their recommendations.
Mr. Leipzig, even though we don't have a quorum, do we still want to do a suggested motion, or should we wait to do that till we have a quorum?
Madam Chair, I think I would just wait, frankly.
Okay.
Karen, if you, is there any concerns with that?
That would be fine.
That might be the easiest thing to do, and we'll just, we can, at our next meeting, we can give a quick update on this topic and then make the recommendation at that point. That might, probably would be the best thing to do.
Okay, thank you. In addition, Ms. Miller, you completed?
Yes, I'm done.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, I didn't want to interrupt you again. So I think, as we discussed earlier, we're going to skip also over the election of the officers until we have a quorum. And that takes us to the Director's Report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jay Leipzig, yes, as, as we just discussed with some of the action items for, for this evening, such as the approval of the minutes, the election of officers, and also the recommendation on the, the Comprehensive Plan Annual Review will be done at our next meeting. I would like to propose that we cancel the July meeting, which is scheduled for July 22nd, just because it's, it's difficult to get a quorum in July, July and August, but we think we were able to do it in August. Our next meeting date in August would be August 26th. And so we'll have those items for, for action queued up for August 26th. If that, if this, if you all agree with that, just canceling the July meeting. I think there are staffing concerns and other quorum issues we have, not only with this board, but all of our boards, just a bad time to meet in the summer. So I recommend that. The other item to note is the update on the Board of County Commissioners items or actions in your packet is a summary of those cases, and I won't go into great, great detail on those, but if you do have questions, please feel free to, to contact me on that. Karen already provided an update on her advisory committee meeting on May 28th. They did release Module 1, which are the initial discussion, and talked about that with the advisory committee, as well as staff has gone through that module in great detail. And they're still on schedule for finishing up the process for, for editing and discussion the end of the year, and looking at bringing that forward for adoption, probably the second quarter of 2026, sometime in the spring of 2026.
Jay, a question on that. Craig Connell here. When is the next advisory meeting for that? Is there a date set?
This is Karen. A date has not been set for the next advisory committee meeting.
Okay.
I think it'll possibly be August, but we don't know yet, September. I don't even venture to say. We will get back to that, Mr. Connell. But I know we're, we're still going through Module One and looking at, getting ready to release Module Two for, for additional comments. The, the last item is the, as a reminder, we'll have a draft Carnip update, or Carnip recommendation before this body, the meeting on, on August 26th. And then we'll also have for action on the comprehensive plan and a review for you on August 26th as well. With that, Madam Chair, that completes my report for you this evening.
Thank you so much. Commissioners, do we have any old business or new business that you'd like to bring to the commission? Okay, for the commissioners who are here, does anybody have any concerns they'd like to voice about canceling the July meeting?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Do you have any concerns about canceling the July meeting? Per the recommendation of the staff? I think that sounds perfectly good, especially we're having troubles getting a quorum. Okay, well, if there's no other issues, I would propose that we adjourn. Can I get a motion to do so?
Second. Craig Connell, second.
Okay, thank you, guys, and thank you to the members of the public who came.
Thanks, everyone. I appreciate it.